Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order. It's Monday, June 5th, six o'clock. The roll call, Steve?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
John?
Here.
And I have two excused people. I'll look for a motion to approve the Planning Commission minutes from May 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Committee, Plan Commission minutes from May 1st.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first item on the agenda is discussion on remedial action at 154 Wacoa Street. Carter?
Good evening, guys. So just an overview of everything tonight. We'll have the 154 Wacoa Street discussion. Then we'll go on to the zoning code revision, review, and summary. And then the project summary for downtown parking. So first with 154 Wacoa Street. We've been through this remediation process before with 244 Elm Street. That took about, from May to September of 2022. You can see it from May to July, August, September of the items that we went through. And that just involved a tow of two vehicles. This one's a little different. Started back in May of 2022 and is still ongoing. Went to court at one point, in which was granted a continuance over the winter. And with a deadline set of May 1st. Then we were alerted to some debris that was encroaching on the city property, behind the property. And so that was another item added. So it kind of piled up. And at the May 1st deadline, we're still seeing some debris there. So here's some pictures going through the timeline. May 23rd of last year, you can see, this is from the street there, the beginning of Wacoa Street. Some metal, scrap parts, tractor and whatnot. This is the August 10th checkup. There was an extension asked for in June, July. So this is in August now, from the same street view. As you can see, still some debris on the property. And this is when the initial court appearance was set. And the continuance was granted over the winter on September 13th. November 2nd is when we went and inspected the city property side. And saw the debris encroaching on the city property. You can see from an aerial taken in 2021, the white parcel lines with the debris that is over into city property here. That is pretty much similar to what is currently out there. Although I know McCoulter has been working pretty hard on it recently to clear that side. And you can see from the eagle view aerial that the debris there, just a different angle. And this is the approximate property line here. So some debris encroaching there as well. And this was the May 1st checkup on the city property side. Pretty similar to the aerials we saw previous. And then the front side, on which the fence panels were constructed to screen the property from the street view. So where we are now, since May, minimal levels of compliance have been reached. With talking with Phil, we've decided that we will send a final letter violation under the Chapter 410 nuisances. So the property owner would have 30 days from when the letter gets sent to achieve compliance. Then the Plan Commission, after the 30 days, would be able to decide if the city should pursue remedial action under the Chapter 410 nuisances processes. That's assuming if compliance has not been reached. So for compliance, can be achieved by erecting a partition or a fence along the front of the property, which has been started, as we saw before in the pictures. And then removing all the items encroaching on the city property. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Plan Commission for some thoughts and discussion. And McCoulter is here as well. McCoulter would like to speak, we can have him up as well. So, alright. He can come up to the podium then if he'd like to speak.
Tell us who you are, where you live.
My name, yes, Charlotte is my grandmother. My name is McCoulter Eaton, grandson and person that's primarily there. Grandfather Harley passed away last spring, when this was kind of starting. So, I guess, I printed out some pictures. I guess I'll use this drone footage here. So, I put up, back, when this kind of started back then, a couple of years ago. Built a lot of things and a lot of material laying out. I came to see with the fence permit, I put a fence up after talking with the city about hiding some of the stuff in back. Because always, ever since I've ever known, I've always had stuff in the back. So, I was putting up that, getting that fence permit ready, looking at the plot line and stuff, I said, oh, wow, okay. This is all city property. So, and there was a lot to move. So, when I applied for the fence permit, I said, hey, I build a really fancy, pretty fence for around here. Hide some of the stuff that I've got, and also hide the city dump, kind of win-win. So, that's what we went for. And I got a little carried away with that storing more stuff. Which, then, you know, this last go-around, that's, when I was working on the front, Carter brought out the items in the back on the city property. And I said, yeah, I got a bunch of stuff sitting on the city property. So, come November, said I need till spring, figuring I'd have a couple of months in the winter to get the stuff off of the property. Well, winter was kind of a, it sucked. Lot of snow, and it was hard to, I couldn't really dig at anything. So, I mean, I really didn't get started moving stuff until, like, late March. And then I was working on it all the way up to the May 1st, and it wasn't done. I mean, I was basically just getting started. Like, March, I held up like 7,000 pounds, and, or 13 in April, and it went up. Got a bunch out in May. The picture that, sorry, I didn't, I didn't know how many people. This is, when you look in, like, from the prop, where the property line would be here, looking this way. That's that first picture. And then the second picture, again, like here, looking this way. So basically, everything from right right here, all the way over here, I've got cleared, removed. I haven't, I still have the fence up, and I still have pallets of paving stones. And, like, everything right along the fence, some pallets. I haven't removed the fence yet, because still trying to figure out where I'm gonna move it off the property, or like, move it there, or like, take it out somewhere else. And now that it's summer, it's a busy time for, because I helped my dad do air conditioning all over the state, servicing air conditioners for the telecom company. So, in order, I guess, finish it up, I'm gonna remove that fence that kind of hides the city dump. I'm gonna need another couple of months for that. I would, I would prefer, I'd like to leave the fence. I know I've gotten a lot of compliments on the fence, the neighbors all like it a lot. But honestly, the reason I put it up is so I could store some things, so. If I can't put anything behind the fence, I'll take it down. And then I'll probably have to build another fence going, basically from like, that line where it's at. So I imagine that'd be the next thing is, you know, somebody wouldn't like to look at the backside of the building, so. I'd have to make a fence going on that side of the property, going north, which that'll take time too. Plan going forward, I'm working on it. Again, if I could keep the fence and keep a couple of things behind it, I would appreciate that. I think it would still be a win-win for, for like, both. Again, it would hide the city dump, and it would also, I'd be able to have the few things on the pallets behind it. If not, I'd remove it and basically relocate it to a different property, more than likely.
Does the fence have to go? Is that what we're thinking about?
It's on the city, city property, yeah.
All the fences on city property.
Can you reuse it, can you reuse it for like, the front? Because you're ultimately gonna have to fence in your property to be able to have your stuff kind of out of sight, is the way it sounds?
Yeah, and I, so I was working on a different design, because the way the gate is, it would make it difficult to work with. But I thought about it, but then, I don't know if it was Carter or Matt, said it was too high for along the street.
So city code allows for a fence to be up to eight feet tall, and it's higher than eight feet?
No, it's eight foot. But, possibly, it'd take a bunch of rework, but. So, I guess that's kind of where it's at. As far as remedial action on removing stuff and, you know, items from city property, I would, I mean, besides taking down the fence and relocating pallets of paving stones, there really isn't anything to relocate. I've done quite a bit of clearing that all out. Like I say, it's just the fence and pallets behind the fence that are really remaining.
At the end of this, you'll need a fence to, to cover what, what you have left, right? Is that, is that how I understand it?
If I take down that, I'm gonna have to do something on the backside, as well as, I, you know. I, right now, I just have, I just made some temporary kind of paneling for the front. Just to hide some of it as I'm cleaning up. And I do that, I'm trying to get rid of a bunch of stuff. I mean, that's one good thing about this, and kind of forcing me to break a bad habit of keeping some certain things. But I am getting rid of stuff, and it's moving along. Still gonna have a rack with steel. Still gonna have projects ongoing, if I build stuff, you know, hobby artwork, stuff like that. As far as being in, like, compliance with stuff on the city property, I'm thinking I'm getting real close. Again, just need to move the fence, but I'm gonna need some time to do that. With it being a busy season, for heating and cooling, that is.
The deadline, 30 days from now, Matt? Is that kind of what, the way it's shaping up, or is it 30 days from?
30 days when you said you'd send a letter, is what I heard earlier.
30 days would just be consistent with our code enforcement process, that's just the general deadline.
Finish, finish what's required?
Just to put out, this process started in May of 2022, so. We're talking about, this is over a year now.
So then what happens, Prescott said he goes in and takes down the fence?
Well, so we're talking about multiple issues, I guess. There's junk all over the city property, but then there's junk all over the property itself. And that's one of the reasons I asked attorney, our city attorney, to be here. Because at this point, we're actually looking at the property itself, with all the junk that's scattered around. And actually going in and potentially having remedial action on the property itself, since Mr. Eaton hasn't put up a fence, or has he cleaned the property, to, to avoid the nuisance violation. And then, I mean, Phil can speak more to our conversation, and help out too, if you have questions for him as well.
No, in these pictures, it looks like a lot of the stuff got cleaned up in the back, is that?
The ones that Carter took, or?
No, the one, this one.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah, because I just found out about, I thought I was gonna get a little more notification.
That, and that's where we were last November, we're standing here and looking at this. Some of this footage all got cleaned up.
Yeah, he has made, he has made good progress since we were there in November, since when I was out there in May. There were some items that were gone and some ground that was showing. There were just some larger items that were still out on the periphery, but it, it was still a long ways, because it's essentially the, the building line is the property line. So there's still a long ways of getting it fully cleared off city property, so.
As far as the property itself, if he were to put a fence around his property, he could have whatever he wants in there, right?
By our code, yeah, that's how it's written.
Yeah, it sounds like that would be the goal.
Yep.
Get a fence up and then put everything in it?
So the property line on the east side there?
Yeah.
Is right up against the building?
No. No, it's, it's like 20, 24ish feet. It's hard, it's deceiving with this aerial photo, because it's at an angle, but. I got, you know, it's basically like, I got a couple of little canopies in the back. It's basically right on the edge of those canopies, going straight north.
And how many feet is your property just wondering on the city property, or how, your fence?
The fence, when I built it, I said I was gonna go all the way up to the power line, power pole. So it's like 75 feet.
On to city property?
Yeah. So, it's like, because that's why, you know, aside some of the stuff in the back, but I went further, so that, you know, then, as you're coming down, I forget what the other street name is, you don't have a straight view into the city dump, which.
And you worked with the city to?
Yeah, back, years back, like, what, three or four? I asked, when I was the first applying for a fence permit, that's, sat down and said, okay, this is where, what's going on.
And the city said, yes, build it on city property?
Yeah, said it would be a temporary fence. If something like this ever did occur, I could remove it with more relative ease, I suppose. Basically, it's a weighted fence. Well, it's a weight, it's a ballasted fence. It's basically, rather than digging a permanent hole in the ground and putting a post. I built big concrete deadman ballast, and it hangs on, basically just kind of standing on, a weight. A weighted post, anyway.
But the city, the city now, Carter, Matt, is asking the fence to be removed off of, the fence to be removed off city property?
Yeah.
Is that?
I wouldn't say our focus is more so on the fence, it's more so on the items that are on city property behind the fence.
Okay.
That kind of doesn't make sense to me, though, because I'm, and I'm just asking, because I don't know. And maybe someone looked at this, but. So, you're not so much worried about the fence on city property, but the stuff that's on there, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct, yeah.
The fence could potentially stay?
I think our position has been, we want all the junk removed from our property and cleaned up on your property. And that, Mr. Eaton has stated that if I'm taking the junk off my, off your property from the back, I'm gonna remove the fence and use it elsewhere. Unless I'm misstating that, Mr. Eaton, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I don't, I just put a lot of time and effort in trying to make a nice, pretty fence. If I can't, like, utilize some of the space in the back, as far as like, storing it. Like I said, I got way carried away with storing stuff. But if I'm not able to store, you know, a few things behind the fence, I don't want to keep it up, I, there. It just, I spend a lot of time, money on it, and if I can't use it, what's the point? I'd rather take some of the siding, you know, sheet metal, and put up a sheet metal fence on the backside, and go all the way up, just have paneling that way.
Is that fence mobile? It's temporary, is it mobile?
Yeah, well, yeah, so, I mean, it's, I mean, they're 24-foot sections. It's mobile, but it's still, it's, it's still a lot of work to handle.
I was just thinking, since they're mobile, you could utilize them on your property for a brief minute to get your fence built, to get your property surrounded, so that you could keep your stuff. You know, just an idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility, but that's a lot of work to put that up, just moving, you know, moving that, to build a fence, and then to take that one down, it's a lot of work. It's not, I guess it's not that mobile. But, yes, that is a possibility. But.
So is the city asking for a fence to completely surround the property, is that?
Or you just have to keep it?
Unless he's cleaning it up. If he cleans it up, then he doesn't have to put a fence up necessarily. The fence would be the, the barrier between his stuff and.
Yeah, so you're talking about this nuisance, um, violation, right? Like, what, how exactly is that clarified, like, defined? You know, if there's a pallet of paving stones behind, you know, on the east side of the building, is that considered within code or not?
It was initially a violation of 443-9, which is exterior maintenance of commercial property relating to debris. But we found that we would rather go down the process of 410, Chapter 410 nuisances, because it involves a plan commission and the remediation process. This would also fall under a nuisance as well, because it would decrease surrounding property values and some of the other ones, I can't remember off the top of my head.
But it is zone commercial, correct?
It is zone highway commercial, yeah.
Do you want me to speak to that, the difference in the ordinances?
Yeah, I think.
So, we initially issued the citation under the 443, because it's enforcement mechanism, we have a fine set. We could proceed under 443, but then it's just a building inspector making the decision on whether this constitutes a nuisance. So, I thought it was better to proceed under 410. So it's some oversight from the Planning Commission to say whether we're gonna abate this property, as opposed to just letting one person decide that. Because under 443, the hearing is only in front of the building inspector. So he's the judge, the jury, everyone. And so we thought it was better to have the Plan Commission make the decision whether it's a nuisance. And a nuisance is pretty broadly defined, there's a lot of different definitions. But it's to cause or contribute to the depreciation of real estate values caused by a state of disrepair or unattractive appearance, which is the definition in the code that I thought would fit in this matter. I think it's very similar to the property maintenance under 443. But I thought that added oversight to give Mr. Eaton, you know, someone to be able to talk to, as opposed to it just being me as city attorney. I've held the citation open now for about a year, just trying to force compliance. And we've had a lot of discussions on that, and that's why we finally gave the May 1 deadline, because it's been about a year at that point, so.
I was gonna say, so there's, there is a little bit of subjectivity to that definition, obviously. But what we're asking basically is, as I understand, is remove the debris from the city property, as long as that's done. And the debris that's visible from the road, is it removed? Or behind some type of barrier, is that basically?
All I got right now is sitting out front, I have vehicles parked, and vehicles and trailers. Everything else is behind, and the dumpster, is the only things that are out visible.
So, so then, my second, my question, because that was kind of, to help me understand, that was a good question. So then, what's the process? Now you have 30 days to get this cleaned up. If you don't, do we have someone go in and clean it up for him?
Then you make the decision whether you want the city to incur that abatement cost. So, that would be the remedial action. If it's not done within 30 days, then it comes back before the Plan Commission to say, do we want to spend city money to abate the property?
Who's making the decision on whether it's been cleaned up to the code standard? Is that state staff, is that someone else, is that?
City staff.
Does the Plan Commission need to take a field trip? I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not a joke, but I'm, it's a, it's a serious question, like, who does make that determination?
No, I, it is, the determination to bring it back before the Plan Commission would be Carter and Matt. And then, if they don't think it's cleaned up at that point, then it would be your decision on whether you think this constitutes a nuisance, or, you know, the exterior maintenance is such that we want to expend, you know, city funds to clean it up if it's not done.
I think for me to make a decision on that, I'd have to see it. Like, I'd want, like, I get, we have pictures and stuff from 2022, but I guess he says he's cleaned some of it up. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong in that, but I kinda wanna see.
It's a work in progress, yeah, um, and will continue to be.
So I guess what we're, what, if, um, the current process is we'll issue the next letter and. And see where we're at, and then we'll make, I guess if that's the plan commission's. At, yeah, I would definitely encourage you to drive past the property and, and look at it, and if you think it's. It's right off of Highway thirty-five Jefferson Street, so not that far from our downtown area and stuff like that, so.
I mean, I'm very, I'm very familiar with the property and I go by there frequently. I don't live across the street from it though, so there's a big difference there. It sounds like there has been, I, I guess, I don't know when you were last there, Carter, uh, but it sounds like maybe there's been some. Significant progress made to clean up the debris that's on city property. Uh, it sounds like there's still some more left to be done to get off, uh, city property.
Yeah, the fence and, like I said, there's pallets behind it.
I guess this is the question of how, how much, how much longer are we gonna let this drag out, I guess, is kind of the question, right?
Yeah. I will need more than thirty days.
I mean, it's been a year, you go over for a year.
Well, okay, so last.
And it's your trash.
Yeah, and that's where I focused on cleaning up everything on the city side, as much as I could. This past May, April, and May, I mean. I wanted to have it done by then, but like I said, I was kinda thinking I could. Do some of the work in the winter, I wasn't expecting an all-out. Full-on. Blast of. Crazy winter, um.
I mean, without going down there, these, these photos do look like it's pretty well cleaned up from just comparing. All that debris there to what's on these photos, I mean, without going down there, can I, can't completely confirm that, but.
Same.
Looked like there's significant progress from, at least from some of these other photos and aerial views.
I mean, what does it cost, what's a job like this cost for the city? Cause that's really what the decision we have to make, correct, is like if we wanna in thirty days say the city's gonna come and clean it up?
I would just add to what City Attorney Hoggson said, if we make the determination to do remedial action, that cost does get back on the property owner in place of certain. So we do try to recoup our costs in terms of cleaning up the property.
Thirty days isn't enough.
Well, I mean, depends on when he sends the letter, but to move, again, being that it's now May and summer. You know, we get called to go all across the state servicing the telecom buildings. I can do my best, but I'm. It'll be tough to.
Could you hire somebody to do it?
Could, but not how to pay them. That's, I mean, right now, a lot of this is, I mean, it's all on me to do individually.
So what would? I have.
Ultimately, it's gonna be on you if.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why.
And you're gonna have to pay for it anyway, so it might be your best interest.
Sounds like you're really close too.
Yeah.
If you, I mean, find a buddy, find a couple buddies.
I've had buddies over help me with trailers and all that stuff.
So from your May first picture, what is left in your opinion, Carter, for him to get cleaned up?
Based on what he describes, it seems like the pallets along the fence, um, I'd have to go out and check. Again, exactly. What he's cleaned up in relation to the property lines, where it's at, um, but. From what he describes, it sounds like it's a lot better from when he's, I was out there in May first.
I was at all the, like, in this picture, like this one right here. Is this? Some of the stuff you're talking about needing to be cleaned up as well, or just the stuff in the back?
Um, I mean, the front side, he's put up the partitions, uh, so that's not as much of a concern, although they are kind of.
I have two, I don't have a gate yet, basically, I haven't, I put up two just to help block some of it. I haven't had time to build a, you know, full-on gate, I couldn't throw up a solid panel there, cause then I'd have no way to get in and out. I mean. I could probably get the fence removed within thirty days, but like to build a gate and have the other fence all set up and done, no way. No way I could have it in thirty days.
It sounds like you don't have to remove that fence in the back, right?
Yes, he does.
Oh, he does now. I'm confused.
It's not very clear.
It's not really clear at all.
Yes, the fence is on his land, it's on the city land, it should not be there.
You know, I know, but the city had told them previously a couple years ago, right?
Yeah, but that's not a forever.
Temporary fence.
It's a temporary fence.
But does, so that is part of what needs to go too, cause I was under the understanding a little bit ago.
I guess just to reiterate what we have talked to Mister Eaton about, and he can correct us if I'm wrong, or Carter can jump in here. We asked, we met onsite in November, we stood in the back and looked at all of the things that were back there, and we said to Mister Eaton. This needs to get cleaned up all the way, all of the junk, it goes all the way to the building. Mister Eaton said, okay, I need more time to do this, we further expanded upon the time we owed a game and said, okay, May first, is that enough? He said, yes, give me the May first, I'll have it done. He said, if, I don't wanna leave my fence back here, we said, we don't really have a concern about your fence right now, he said, he put in a lot of decorative work and the city worked with them before to put up a temporary fence. He said, the fence isn't really out of concern right now, it's all the other things. However, Mister Eaton has said that, well, if you're gonna force me to take all this stuff out here, that this fence was screening that, I'm not gonna leave the fence there. So again, to go back to Carter's point is, we as a city have never said to Mister Eaton, you need to remove the fence. It is on our property.
That's my question.
However, Mister Eaton has asked that he does not want to.
So if I can leave that fence up until I. Go, you know, put some on the back, and I'm not gonna get the remedial action for having the fence still there. That's fine, I'll work on getting a few last bits of things off the city property, besides leaving the fence up. I'll build a fence going north. And then I will take down. The fancy fence.
So in thirty days, do you think you could get?
But, no.
The stuff, not the fence?
Yes, the stuff.
Just the stuff, like the pavers and all that?
Yep, yep.
You can get that off in thirty days?
Yeah, absolutely.
So are, so are you saying, when you say build a fence going north, are you talking about on the east side or the, or the street side?
Yes, yes. Kind of work right, right where the line is, on that picture.
On your side, on your property?
Correct.
I think that's the goal, is to cover his property, the city wants that, yeah, or you gotta clear it.
Yeah.
One or the other, I think, is what they're shooting for.
I was, I was, I'm sorry, I guess I was understanding it, the fence was gonna be along the street.
I'll have something in the, for the gate, like, with the building, but.
So the city's concerned, is the city concerned about the east side of that property?
That's, the east side is where I had materials on the city property, which I was working to get everything done. And that's where the remedial action is led, and I've been working also getting rid of the stuff that's on our property. But my main focus was getting everything off city property first.
So do you think in thirty days you can have all of this stuff off city property?
Is the city, is the city asking for a fence along the east, or along the property line, or?
Yeah, initially, the fence was asked to be put along the street side to enclose the property from the street side. Um. The backside, uh, was kind of an after-the-fact finding, uh, so if he can, if he continues to have debris out in his property like that. Um, full compliance would be a complete enclosure of commercial property.
Okay, gotcha.
So you're talking Cedar and Wacota?
Um, I don't have the parcel map up right in front of me, but I believe the building. The side that's along Cedar is essentially the property boundary, so he wouldn't necessarily need to put a fence up on that side, uh, just really the street side. Uh, and then that red line, there's a wall of trees along the, I guess, north side, that could act as a partition as well.
Um, out of curiosity, exactly what is in front of us tonight, to decide to, to have remedial action or to decide how to proceed?
What in front of you is tonight is just the opportunity to hear this case before it gets to the point of remedial action. At first, we were having the discussion that this would be the remedial action, but after talking to our. City attorney, we wanted to push this to one more letter. Give the. Uh, property owner one more opportunity to clean the property before we actually bring it to official remedial action, if it's not cleaned up by August.
It sounds like he's making really good progress, and my particular opinion would be to, to choose more time, Eaton's have been a part of this town forever and. I, I know that it's been a long time, but that would be my two cents is. A little bit more, but, uh, but how we define that, after a year of trying, you guys working really hard to get this to where it is now is. You know, I'm sympathetic to that as well, how you outline that, but, uh. That's kind of my two cents on it.
Any other discussion?
I tend to agree with.
I, I see.
So if we send a letter, like you discussed, what is that, does that reset the clock to thirty days, or what exactly does that do?
That's what we'd be, that's what we'd be, that's what we're asking for tonight, is essentially we send a letter, give them thirty days, if it's still out of compliance, then we'd send their remedial action letter. And then you'd be able to come back in August.
Okay, so let's say you all decide to go that route, and what I'm seeing as my, as what you would expect of me. Um, I would get rid of the raining stuff on the city property. And I could have the current fence that's there stay while I construct. Uh, something to cover on that north, that north-south run, or on the east side. And then. Build a gate for that. Front on the Wacota street side. That.
You think you can do that in thirty days?
I can certainly have the.
All the stuff off the property.
That's where. I'm at, I can definitely have that done in thirty days. I, what I'm saying is I will not be able to have that current fence off the property in thirty days. I will not have a north-south fence off. Or built up in thirty days, but I'll have the city property cleaned. Less the fence.
Is that sit well with you, Matt and Carter?
I guess we'd like to wait and see, to see what actually happens, I mean.
Okay.
That's generally.
Is there a way we could set milestones that if progress is being made, checking in, in these meetings? Uh, so monthly, a substantial amount of progress is being made, we keep it going, and if he goes a month without. Any compliance, then he'd be, it would, you know, that would.
Done.
Done, yep.
Your second chance.
Right, well, we're already in a second chance, no thirty seconds.
We're giving him thirty days though, to get the stuff off the property, and then after.
A year and thirty days.
A year and thirty days, that's fair, but then like after he gets the stuff off the property, we're not. Just to be clear, cause this is really, am I not understanding it? We're not really asking him to remove the fence at this point. Right? Or you are?
We're asking him to abate the nuisance, I don't, sorry, Phil, you have something to.
So, so if he clears his property, he doesn't need a fence.
Yeah.
But I don't think he wants to clear his property, he likes his stuff, and, uh, I like stuff too, if I was him, if I was you, I'd build a fence and, and, uh, put your stuff inside your fence. If he clears his property, he doesn't need a fence.
Okay.
But I don't think he's gonna.
So he's gonna put them, so he, there's gotta be a timeline to put up this fence?
Yeah, and it sounds like it's not realistic that thirty days would be the case, and so I know you guys have a lot of work into it, and it's been a year, and, but I would. I would, my two cents would be to. Just make sure it keeps moving towards it in a, in a very timely manner.
Mayor?
Well, it's very timely.
Thank you.
Good, to his question about can we just keep putting this on to review? Not really, because we have to pr- uh, proceed under our ordinances, and we have to provide certain notices prior to the next plan commission meeting. But it, once that notice is provided, what happens is you almost have a sixty-day time window until remedial action can be taken, so if there's no progress by. August. You know, that, that becomes the issue is not just checking in, but taking, moving forward with the notice required under the nuisance. And then it comes back for the remedial action, and then it's up to the plan commission whether they wanna do it, if they think there's sufficient progress.
I think it's in everyone's best interest that he just gets the job done, I think it's cheaper for the city, less of a headache if you can get it done. Is there a compromise we can make where thirty days isn't enough, but forty is, fifty is, and then that's?
What is it, when's your next planning commission meeting?
August third.
First Monday of.
August third, I'll have.
August seventh, probably, sorry.
Well, work with that. I would, I mean, I'd certainly welcome to come back and show you updated picture. Progress.
You think you can have the fence? Built by then?
You'd have to be done by then, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, there's some progress, we've done, I'm done.
I would lean that way. I don't know if, uh. If that's up to us, but, uh.
Well, here goes, we're not meeting in July, so there's no way we can vote on. Go whatever the, uh, remedial in July anyways, so. Essentially, you'd have to have that almost meet it anyways.
That's a great point.
So back to this, the decision we have tonight is to send the letter or to not send the letter, is that?
I think what planning commission is saying, if I'm understanding, is instead of us going through the thirty days, giving the letter as soon as possible, giving them thirty days. And then add, bringing the remedial action to you in August, is what I'm understanding, you're asking to say. Let's just see where he isn't at in August and give him up to then and not even.
How about, would this be a good idea, Mister Mayor, would be to send the letter July first, that would give him thirty days?
That, that's, makes no difference, that would make no difference, because.
Oh, absolutely, it would, because if you send it today, he has to be done by the fifth of July.
We don't meet until August.
Doesn't matter, that's when city staff is gonna go.
Right.
And check it out.
Then we're gonna give them that.
Whether or not he was in compliance.
Whether or not they're, if they have a meeting that day or the next day.
Doesn't matter when the meeting is.
At the end of the thirty days. Thirty days, thirty days. It's kind of like if you're speeding ticket, they go, you got thirty days, that you don't go, well, the judge is on vacation.
I thought, I thought you said we couldn't do remedial action without planning commission voting on it.
We're not. No, it would be on the vote for next, or for August.
Right.
And if he's done, we both know.
Whether or not he made it in thirty days.
If he's all done.
Wait, but if he, let's, let's say we send it tomorrow. Sends the letter, thirty-day letter.
Mm-hmm.
He's not done in thirty days, but then between that, that time and our next meeting in August, he gets it done.
How would he?
Now there's nothing to remediate.
How would he prove it?
Well, actually, if they sent the letter.
We're not gonna send, we're not gonna send, we're not gonna send a cleanup crew over there when we know it's already done.
We're gonna send, uh, the staff is gonna go over there at the end of the thirty days and look, and if it isn't done, then they're gonna bring that forward, that it wasn't done. Regardless if he got it done past the thirty days, that's what you're gonna go over.
So why wouldn't you just send it July first?
What would, what would we be voting on to send it to?
Well, he didn't get it, he wasn't in compliance.
And then, it's, it's a fine, or? Okay.
Could be, or if it. For remedial.
But there's nothing remediate, I'm saying, if it's done, between July seventh and August seventh, then there's nothing to remediate if it's already done.
That, that would be.
Am I, am I way out of base here?
No, I, I think my recommendation would be just send the letter, because you don't meet till August.
That's what I'm, that's, I'm.
And, and then there's no.
So in thirty days, you're gonna go check on it, but then you're probably gonna go check on it right before our August meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That works for me.
So either way, it doesn't matter if you send it July first or June, or tomorrow.
Okay. Unless it's, unless there's some sort of fine involved, where thirty days from that letter, Carter goes and checks. He's not in compliance, and then some kind of fine is right then.
Yeah, well, I mean, I already got a fine.
There's already a fine waiting over, waiting over his head, that's, I gave the May first deadline, saying you're gonna have to pay something if you don't get it done by May first.
So would that, would that be triggered by this thirty day?
No, that, that's just discretionary with the city prosecutor, so I'm likely still gonna ask that a fine. Um, be ordered to pay some sort of fine for having to. Deal with this for so long.
Okay, so moving, we're gonna send the letter. And then we'll meet back on August seventh.
Correct, the city will review, staff will review, and if we find it's in compliance, then it's a done deal and. Everybody goes home and cheers, and if not, then we bring it back to.
Do we wanna maybe take, just. Do we have to take a field trip and look at it, or is this just based on what you guys are finding?
I would do it on your individual, so we don't violate open meeting spots.
Perfect, got it.
Okay.
She's making a motion?
All right, no, we don't need a motion. All right, ready to move on to the next item on the agenda. Which would be.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
The overview of chapter six thirty-five zoning revisions.
All right, so. Chapter.
Thanks, take care.
Six thirty-five, um, go through a timeline just quickly and I'm gonna, I know we've been meeting on this for quite some time. I think actually we'll go over in the timeline how long we've been discussing this, but so a lot of this discussion will be, I'll try to move quickly and I'll try to just give you a chance to get, um, feedback if you want. I'll stop after each slide. If you have questions or statements, uh, we can address those as we go, but to go through a timeline. October fourth, twenty twenty-one, uh, planning commission review changes specifically just to the C two district. October fifth, twenty twenty-one, um, the city council asked, uh, instead of passing that revision just for C two, that, that, that we go back and we review the whole chapter six thirty-five and do a complete look at the whole entire chapter for the, uh, six thirty-five that is. And then June third, uh, man commission reviewed three proposals for reviewing this work. Ultimately, we ended up going with the recommendation and working with Cedar Corporation. That's what Mr. Coulson has been working with us on, on this work. Um, June thirteenth, city council then approved that. From September through November of twenty twenty-two, staff worked internally with Mr. Coulson to come up with proposed changes that we then started reviewing on December fifth. Started with accessory dwelling units and solid energy. Then January third, we discussed bed and breakfast and short-term rentals and electrical vehicle, vehicle charging stations. March sixth, we reviewed zoning map changes over, or zoning, yeah, zoning map changes and then overall zoning district changes. Uh, and then April third, uh, we reviewed architecture requirements, addition, landscape standards addition, mobile tower additions, and then revisions to accessory structures. Then our last meeting, planning commission review changes to parking standards and finalized changes to accessory structures. Uh, moving forward, meeting tonight, uh, we'll review the overall, just quickly, go through it, uh, review that code and then recommend, uh, what we look for as a recommendation to bring it to city council for planning commission to hold a public hearing. Uh, that would be at the June twelfth and city council review the code changes and consider a public hearing request from planning commission, assuming you want to move forward tonight. Just a note, if approved, we would be sending letters to all the C two district, uh, members because that's how this whole process started. So we just want to make sure that they're all aware of what's being discussed and aware of their opportunity to come to hear those changes before plan commission. And then R one property owners, uh, would also get the letter because we're proposing changing, uh, certain areas of the community, St. Croix Bluffs, Great Rivers and then, um, Pine Ridge to R four. And then of course we do proper notification as well in our, uh, local paper and, uh, in terms of publishing through the Wisconsin state statutes. Uh, then August seventh, if council approves, planning commission would hold a public hearing, consider the recommendations of approval, uh, and to make those recommendations to changes to city council to consider. And then August fourteenth, if approved by planning commission, city council would consider, uh, those changes via ordinance for the first reading. And then of course it could go to a second or third as well. So it's kind of the process before us in the timeline as we have so far. Are there any questions on that or?
Is, uh, this, uh, we beat this up a lot and even before my time, uh, and it's a lot to chew on. And I was reading through it for funsies. I, I tried to skim quite a lot of it. Is it still editable in this current state?
Yes, if there's, I mean, if there's still revisions of, and if, you know, we talked tonight and you say you wanna have more time to review or discuss something, you're not ready for it to be approved. Uh, I think Bob jumped, I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, so this is correct. I mean, this is the time, if there hasn't been a public hearing set. So as Matt said, you know, that, uh, you know, we would like to get this thing finished, but making sure that being finished is being finished. And so if there, if there are still edits, uh, yeah, I think that it's, that it's appropriate to talk about those. And if the commission agrees that those edits are relevant, uh, you know, we make the edits, so.
So after reading quite a lot of it, uh, one thing caught my eye and I, I would like to bring it up if I may. Uh, two zero eight seven.
You're on line twenty eighty-seven?
Correct. This is, this is all I would have. I would, I would almost accept it as is otherwise. It's just the only thing that caught my, caught my eyes. I was trying to, trying to read it quite a lot. If I'm reading that correctly, that is, uh, ordinance six thirty-five dash fifty-eight, off-street parking restrictions in residential areas. That's our, that's our homes.
Yes.
And, uh, no more than three vehicles of any type shall be stored in the driveway.
In your front yard, stored, not parked, stored.
Okay, that's where, so how would you differentiate?
Well, most of it's complaint driven. I mean, so if your neighbor says, well, it's been here for six months, well, that's, you know, that's different than, than the visitors coming and then they, you know, they stay, you know, family comes, it stays for a week or something. So, you know, it's discretionary, but I think, I think it becomes very apparent, you know, what's being stored and what's being parked. And I guess I'd leave it to, to staff to maybe kind of chime in on maybe how they, how they might differentiate.
Okay, yeah, when I first read that, I'm like, I, I've got a family of five. I'm gonna, I don't, long ways out from drivers, but eventually I'm gonna have a.
No, and I thought about that because that, and originally was, you know, making sure that we, we're dealing with stored vehicles and not just parked vehicles.
That's all I had.
Turn it back over to Matt. So I'll run through just the changes overall very quickly and then stop after each one, give you a quick second if you want to ask questions, we can stop longer, but, say, so zoning districts, this is line two eighty through eleven seventeen. And I guess I would too, if planning commission doesn't think they want to hear just the overview, we could, we can skip this, but this is basically just what we will be presenting to council then at our next, their next meeting. Uh, removal of zoning district R four as it's not currently in use, removal of R six as it's not currently in use. Uh, limited number of buildings is increased from two to three, um, per accessory structures discussion. External lighting has been added, um, added no more than seventy percent of the total area of the lot can be impervious to all zoning districts. Uh, we remove storage, warehousing and wholesaling as permitted uses and place them as accessory uses for the C two district. Uh, remove vehicle and equipment sales and service establishments from principal permitted uses to conditional uses for C two districts. Remove manufactured and mobile homes from C two permitted uses as they already have their own zoning classification. Added logistics, manufacturing, wholesaling as permitted uses under I three. Uh, revise and change completely the plan unit development, uh, to an overlay district, uh, with a complete rework of the code. And then in terms of zoning map revisions to all residential properties within the St. Croix Bluff subdivision, Pine Ridge, Great River subdivision, changing zoning from R one mixed residential to R four, single-family residential, what that essentially does is, uh, removes, if you're an R four or a single family, it does not allow for any property even on a conditional use basis to be changed into a duplex. And, uh, the one other minor change is it doesn't allow for any of the properties to be daycares, although you can still have a daycare unit within your home as a home occupation business. On the one thing that we did discuss that we ended up moving after a discussion, and this would be something if the planning commission really has strong feelings about it, but the I one light industrial district, um, apparently I lost, oh, here, wrong page. Uh, originally we had discussed about this section in the center of the community, which is I one was light industrial, changing that to a future zoning map of residential. However, our comp plan, that wouldn't be consistent with our comp plan and we are planning to have a review of our comp plan in twenty twenty-five. So the thought here would be to wait to make that change and have that discussion as part of the comprehensive plan review. Um, other than that, the big changes then that we would discuss really overall is, uh, we change this area, the St. Croix Bluffs from our, or we would be proposing a change from R one to R four. And then the, um, Pine Ridge and Great Rivers from R one to R four. And then just some minor things, uh, we cleaned up zoning lines. So before we actually had zoning districts in the middle of properties. I'm not sure how that came to be, but basically we, we changed, uh, made some revisions so that that's cleaned up and that the zoning actually falls within parcel lines for each area. And then finally, we added a P U D, added P U D in lower, lower St. Croix National Scenic River District as overlay. So that overlay district is over here on Long Lake Street. And then we added some overlay lines so you could actually tell where our P U Ds are when you look at the zoning. Because one of the things I can say Carter and I already run into is, well, why are you telling me the R one zoning district has such and such standards? And I can see Palmetto doesn't meet those. Well, Palmetto was a P U D, so they got, they went through the P U D process. So there, as a P U D, there's generally some give and take in terms of standards and requirements. So that's why that is. So then we can at least point to the map and they have a bit greater explanation of why those changes and process were made there. Questions or comments? Um, so conditional uses then under ordinance eleven twenty through seventeen fifty-eight. Um, one big one, we, we removed the zoning board of appeals as the oversight board commissioned for a conditional use. And we removed that, and we moved that to the planning commission. Um, removed all mention of special use. We, previously our current code currently has special uses and then conditional uses. Basically, we're just moving to everything as a conditional use, um, with the plan commission and city council then having the authorities to develop, uh, the length of time that conditional use permit and if it falls under a length of time or if it falls with ownership, that's one of the things we can discuss. Uh, we changed the distance of notification of the public notice hearing for conditional use permits from a hundred feet to two hundred fifty feet, uh, within the boundaries of properties affected. Uh, bed and breakfast code completely changed and revamped, also now requires a conditional use permit for approval. Add code regarding short-term rentals and requiring a city license to operate within the city of Prescott. And then we added code regarding accessory dwelling units that allow for properties that are owner occupied, uh, to have a dwelling unit separate from the principal structure. Any questions or comments there? Um, traffic visibility, loading, parking and access, updated revised language on traffic visibility triangle. Place a new table regarding loading requirements for site plans and businesses. Put in design standards for parking angle width, length and minimum aisle width. Uh, parking standards changed to require that all parking lots over three thousand square feet, shell of concrete curve and gutter installed around the perimeter and be internally drained with catch basins connected to the municipal stormwater system. Updated and put in new table for parking standards, removed old table and changed and updated off-street parking restrictions in residential areas. And that's one of the things that we really wanted to discuss as just a final review item, uh, assuming this would be moving forward. Is one of the, what we're putting in is all vehicles must be placed on improved surface, compacted gravel, concrete or asphalt, with the exemption of recreational vehicles, so campers, boats, jet skis, snowmobiles, which can be placed on the side or rear yard without improved, without needing an improved surface. The one thing that we did also think of, we should probably consider adding just a reference to chapter four forty-three, which mean, which just requires all, all these vehicles must be in working order and properly registered per chapter four forty-three, junk vehicles and appliance.
Within improved service?
Yeah, I apologize, I, that's not, it should be not, not requiring improved service for a recreational vehicle.
I'd, I'd, quick question. So like snowmobiles, for example, I have them, I have them and I have them in an enclosed trailer. If they're in the trailer, they gotta be on a surface, no?
If they're a recreational vehicle, they could be on your grass, on your side or backyard, same with the boat, same with camper, you'd hook up.
Yeah, boat's another good example.
But if you have a camper, that's an actual drivable camper, then we would, that, what this code would say. And generally what we're speaking of, um, is to prevent junk vehicles and the leaking of, um, you know, gasoline or other fluids into the ground, into our water source and things like that is.
So a drivable RV would require?
Correct.
A paved or gravel? And we, we did, you know, we had some discussions with the staff on this to figure this out, just how best to, uh, to describe this. And, and in the end, we, there is a definition that we added in, in the back there for an RV. It's a class one. And so if it's a class one, which is, which is designated by the state in terms of what's a class one RV, that needs to be on the surface. All other kind of recreation, and I don't want to call them recreation vehicles because it, because it, because it kind of gets the same as an RV, but all kind of, you know, recreation type of, of vehicles, you know, and, uh, boats and stuff. Those, those you can park, uh, on your side and the rear, uh, and in the front up to, as long as there's not more than three. Uh, but they don't have to be on, on a gravel surface. But there still is a setback requirement to make sure that there's, that there is some distance to the property line, even, even for parking those.
Sounds like an ATV or.
ATV.
Four wheeler.
Yes, those are, those are, those would all be exempt from the, uh, from the, uh, from the, from the paved surface. Or the gravel surface, a hard surface, I guess we would call it.
I think there was a spot in here that had something about your driveway cannot be more than thirty feet wide.
Yep.
I don't know exactly how wide that is, but I feel like if you put an apron on your driveway, you'd probably exceed thirty feet, I would think.
Wide, not like, wide.
Sure.
Not, so the apron, the apron is usually going to be the width of the garage, uh, and, and it may extend out, you know, five, ten feet is the apron. And, and I guess, I guess if what you're saying is that, so is it thirty feet and flares out?
Yeah, because if you've got an RV, which I don't.
We didn't discuss that.
It's thirty feet on the street. At the street, yes.
Is that the picture curb cut?
So as soon as you get off the right away, you can expand into a.
Because I was thinking, I'm thinking like how you go. Yeah, right, because you've got two stall wide driveway and then you've got an apron for your camper, you know, whatever.
But it's just, does the access from, from the, from the.
Copy that.
To your property, the curb cut. Is that, is that clear?
Correct, and that's when we could go back to that impervious, uh, surface. So if you put in a gigantically wide driveway that's on your property, that's when that calculation does come into play with your accessory structure, so. And remind me, it's seventy percent impervious, I'm sorry.
So that's, that's for parcel, so seventy percent of your parcel impervious can't be more than that. So that's house, driveway, sidewalks and anything that, that sheds water. And, you know, just for a point of clarification, because I got this all the time from people, well, it's gonna be a gravel drive. Uh, once you come back gravel, it has about the same runoff quite efficient as pavement.
So that includes the primary structure? Is included in that seventy percent? So seventy, no more than seventy percent impervious for the entire lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just so I guess maybe take a break here. Performance standard structures, standard and architectural, uh, architectural standards line twenty-four seventy-five through twenty-six sixteen. So essentially this would create for all multifamily, commercial and industrial buildings, basically would trigger a review of what the building actually looked like. We would require a colored concept drawing of all buildings that fall within those categories. The reason, obviously we had a lengthy discussion at our last meeting when it came to, uh, the old Churchill property. So right now, as written, that building would basically be triggered and we would require additional architectural features to be added because it is greater than fifty percent addition to the current building. So any building that's greater than fifty percent, if I'm, if I'm misstating things, if any building addition is greater than fifty percent of the current structure or if it's a brand new building, it would require to file, fall under these new performance standards for architecture.
So now ACE would be required to?
So basically what the process would be, ACE would give us a color drawing, uh, Carter and myself would review it. We would say it's greater than fifty percent of your current structure. So you need to do something to put in windows, maybe flare out the wood paneling that's on your current building. So that is, that would be the current process that would go on after these new standards. So if we want to go to the standard of, well, we'll just review and, um, and, and like what we're currently doing, I guess my thought would be probably have these removed.
But just to be clear, I mean, the, uh, this would be going forward. We'd go back, so ACE, ACE is already through the gate. So these standards would not apply to anybody, any, any property until, until they're adopted and going forward. So we would not go back in time.
I just don't want you guys to hear about a new, a new building and you're saying staff's holding up because of architecture reviews. And then you hear, and you said, well, that's not really fair to them. And then you, you, you say to us, well, you, we don't want that to be in our code, if that makes sense.
I guess, and so you guys are kind of the judge and jury on that?
Well, I mean, it still has to come before you, but we don't let, I guess the, the thought is we follow this code and we don't have it come before you until Carter and I say, okay, it looks good, let's bring it to planning commission.
Out of curiosity, does the existing structure require modification if it's out of compliance of the new code? They double in size or, or even the new part's bigger than the old part, do they have to modify the old part? Or just what they build has to be to the new architectural?
It's a real fine line. So, you know, part of it is the fifty percent rule, uh, and then, and then the building comes in, then the whole building, you know, needs to comply. I would suspect that that means that if you're adding more than fifty percent of floor space to the, you know, either new or remedied, and that does need to comply, you know, that's how, that's how it's written. how it's written. You're ahead of 50% to be, you're probably going to run with that.
Right, plus the original might be in compliance anyways, but there's some standards that break up surfaces, and so then if like Churchill, which was flat in the front, the old part wasn't in compliance, I just don't want to make this too, too heavy for somebody to, to go ahead with an investment in their city, you know?
Mm-hmm. You don't want it to lax either.
Well, right, but, yep, I like it.
Good. So the architectural standards that are being added, those are the ones that we discussed at the.
I think it was the last meeting, I do crack up maybe.
It was a couple meetings, I think a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, it was a month ago.
There's nothing that's been added since then?
No.
The only thing that was added was, was we added that they do have to do a color rendering, that's as part of.
I think we talked about that.
Yeah, but that was added as, as part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Signals, antennas, lines 2619, 3632, revised section on solar energy systems, and added a section on mobile tower sitting. Those are both pretty lengthy and changed, they're good reads to put you to sleep at night. Accessory uses and structures, fences and hedges, lines 36, 35 through 3930. We increased the accessory building limit from two to three. We also made grounds, pools, patios, and other structure with outer roof do not count towards the accessory building limit. One of the things also that we did is we increased the building height from 15 feet to not to exceed the height of the principal structure, and we did add a diagram so that people are able to see what we are actually referring to, so.
And just so that on I to B, that they don't count towards the accessory building limit, but they still do count towards the 70% impervious, so they're not exempt completely.
We added article seven regarding electric vehicle charging stations that reference back to the zoning code. Then we added an article with landscaping, as we recall, we don't have, we require landscaping plans, but we don't have any standards, so this article does put those requirements for landscaping, landscaping to new developments and additions. So with that, the recommendation before you is to request city council to approve a public hearing to be held by planning commission on August 7, 2023, incorporating any of the final changes that you would like to see, as requested by the commission.
Now, do you have a motion? I'd make a motion to have the city council approve, approve a public hearing.
Sir. I have a motion, second, to request city council approve a public hearing to be held by planning commission on August 2. Is there any discussion on motion? If Bob holds in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I have motion, carry. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is downtown parking discussion and review.
All right, so last time there was some discussion about project update on the downtown parking situation. So we have been looking at paved parking, and the idea was initially developed during a parks committee meeting to address the overnight boaters that stay in Merkred Mill Park. Since then, we've brought it to five meetings, this will be the sixth. So if I gloss over any details, just ask questions, because kind of reiterated this a couple times, I might go over a couple details that might not be explained very well. So just stop me anytime you have any questions. So the purpose of this, one, parking revenue can be returned to pay for additional amenities in the downtown. You could think of maybe a public wifi, street plantings in the summer, or some park amenities along the riverfront. Paid parking also stimulates turnover. This is a study that's been done by the American Planning Association, universities like UCLA. It, it is repeatable, it's been done in many cities, it does stimulate turnover, it opens new spots for people. It also cuts on the act of cruising, which is patrolling for an open free spot, because there are more open spots for people to pull into. So it cuts on traffic congestion as well. And so the purpose of this altogether is not just to generate revenue, it's not just for the money, it's to manage our current inventory as best we can without having to invest all that money into a parking ramp or parking lots that really provide nothing, because our downtown is really close to the river, not a lot of room to work with, we would really want businesses, buildings there rather than pavement and parking lots. So this is the downtown parking map. There are 337 spaces, kind of an approximate count, we didn't, we're thinking we'll extend it up to Locust Street, so we'll get some parallel parking along the Three Hills there, but we do have a good amount of parking. Everyone I've talked to, they look at our downtown, they're like, yeah, you, you have enough parking in your downtown, it's just not being managed very well. It's kind of like the Wild West, people are parking everywhere and anywhere, so. We had a question about the Cherry Street parking lot, so this is a concept that I drew up about what the lot could look like when it is done, it's just a concept, so it's not set in stone, it's, we haven't really talked with our public works team if this could be exactly doable yet, but this is kind of an idea we could work with. The bottom part has already been complete, has about 40 spots, and the top part would add about 25 to 30, so we could get close to 70 spots in the Cherry Street lot once it's done, which is a pretty good number. So diving into our solution, Park Mobile and IPS were the two companies that kind of rose to the top, that we favored for enforcement. We're looking at some LPRs with Vigilant Solutions, which is a part of Motorola, and then we're kind of developing a plan for residents and businesses down there to roll out the solution effectively. So back at the April 11 workshop, council favored a solution that, one, utilized a mobile app system, two, involved pay stations for non-mobile payments, three, provides permits for residents and business employees, and lastly utilizes license plate readers for enforcement. Park Mobile is the mobile app. You guys may have used it or not, it's pretty widely used across the United States. I think they said they have 20, 30 million users, maybe, so it's pretty widely used. And IPS Group is the company that has the multi-space pay station that works pretty slick. Under the license plate readers, we were talking with Vigilant Solutions, who is a partner of IPS, and they integrate really well. These would be mobile LPRs that we mounted on police vehicles, and they scan license plate subsecond, so almost immediately, and that would be the idea so police officers can quickly identify violators without having to get out, type in plates, you know, all the time-consuming items, it would just be scanned immediately. They can also integrate with the state of Wisconsin for federal, federal and state hot lists for stolen vehicles, warrants, Amber alerts, everything else. So the enforcement plan you can kind of think of as the upside-down pyramid, where LPR would look at the license plate, do they have a permit, yes or no? Yes, good. No, they would say, have they paid on either of the two, and move forward. Permits, we're looking at doing a permits for residents and employees, this would be cloud permitting. So you see the Rapid City website, this is how they would register for permits online, it's pretty simple, they would self-register. So city, we wouldn't have to actively search out who needs a permit, who doesn't need a permit, and whatnot. So for a permit plan, we're thinking about residents, it would cost about $50, and employees would cost 100, and that would be an annual cost there. Outreach plan for residents, we would try to communicate effectively with them, so utility billing, sending a letter, social media posts, a dedicated webpage with parking info, also explaining the benefits, reducing traffic congestion, increasing availability, and also why are we doing this, and what improvements they could see with the revenue.
Sorry, back to that last slide, so employees that work downtown would still have to pay 100 bucks a month to park?
Yeah, and we would, we would really, we would try our best to make the business pay that. There are a couple, Matt can maybe weigh in on how we would do that, but we would really want that to be a business cost rather than employee cost, because it really wouldn't be fair for the employee to have to pay that cost.
But if they work downtown, St. Paul, downtown Minneapolis, the employees pay their cost.
They do pay for parking ramps and stuff.
Some places, some businesses do, most don't.
Yeah, it really does fall on the employer if they do or not, but it would be the, I don't want to speak for the businesses, but it would probably be the moral thing for them to do, to pay for their employees' cost to park. But it, yeah, it would be up to the employer in the end there. But to get to those numbers, I guess, we figured if 10% of the Prescott residents purchased a $50 permit, that would offset the monthly cost for the software, so kind of setting at the bare minimum. We don't want to make money out these permits, really, it just is, we don't want to have our residents pay for parking like visitors would.
Have you thought about the cost per hour?
Cost per hour, like the rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything that we've thrown through calculations and stuff has been $1.25 per hour.
Okay.
So, we just finished that. So then outreach plan for businesses, again, communicating effectively, emphasizing the benefits, like it's more parking availability for their customers, providing data on turnover rates and conveying the benefits, like I said. It's been done in other cities before, it's been repeatable, and businesses have seen greater sales because of it, so we would just provide that data. We wouldn't have it immediately, but we'd have testimonials from other cities that we could immediately provide for businesses, but once it gets going, they would hopefully see the change. We'd also try to engage them as best we can, so working with the Chamber of Commerce, and then potentially forming a joint parking committee with some of the business owners downtown to gain insight on what's working, what's not working, how to best collaborate with them. And then we kind of created this financial plan of where the money would go, so we decided to split it 50/50. The downtown parking fund would be a fund that would be newly created, correct?
Correct.
And it would have these items that the money could be allocated to, parking equipment, snow removal, new parking acquisition, maybe putting some security cameras downtown, beautification, events, all the good stuff, and the capital improvement plan that's already there, so public safety vehicles, public work vehicles, street projects and parks, parks projects could all be gaining additional funds. Is there any questions or comments?
Have you guys done a cost-to-value analysis in regards to how much this could potentially make for the city?
Yeah, yeah, it does take a lot of variables. The best thing we've got is from IPS Group, they actually created a return on investment calculator based off three similar clients of theirs, and they ballpark that will make about, what was it?
114.
114, 114,000 a year, essentially. And, and the solution itself would cost about 140,000, so the first year would really be kind of paying back that upfront cost.
Of what's on the map that you provided in regards to the parking downtown, how many of these spots would be affected by this new system?
All those spots on there, we would try to implement the system to. Our thoughts are maybe things north of Locust Street would be free.
And it would not affect the boat launch?
The boat launch would remain that, that station that's already down there, yeah.
You'd think more than the 10% of residents would buy it too.
I don't know, I don't know if you'll get that.
I don't think so either. Maybe with time, but not, people are going to push back on this big time.
Well, I mean, after the first year, I think, that's where we're at.
Is this something you're, like, going to bring to council to, this is happening kind of thing?
This has been to a council once and like four workshops already.
Correct.
Yeah, that was another thing. Yes, we do.
Yeah, so I would say we're fairly deep into it at this point.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean, everywhere else, you know, Hudson has it, River Falls.
Yeah, and that's really what we're trying to catch up to, because people kind of view Prescott as like the free parking place, they're on your boat, you don't got to move your car for however long, so that's really what we're trying to, you know, try to come back.
Or don't pay for the beach across the river parking Prescott for free, walk across the bridge.
Yeah, so we're seeing some issues that this could kind of address.
I don't, no, I don't think it's a bad idea at all, really. Is it comparable with other cities for the price per hour?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've heard that the city of Hudson on their periphery spots go down to 50 cents an hour, but they also have like double the spots of us just paid and like triple the spots of us that are free, so they just have a larger downtown than us.
What's the likelihood this phase two will come to fruition, the Cherry Street parking?
Uh, come to fruition as presented. I don't know, that's something we just kind of thought could work up there, I haven't spoke with Mike on it at all, if it's actually feasible, I mean.
Seems like it'd be a big, a big wall.
Yeah, it, it would be a big retaining wall, so you might be looking at a little less spaces, but I don't know.
Unless, unless you have a secret engineering degree, I don't know about, that's one of the things.
Yeah, very conceptual drawing, but.
I, I like that too, I think that we need to add a couple more spaces, especially since.
Be fun to someday see a parking garage like Hastings has right there.
You said that paid parking doesn't work in a good, really good in a parking garage.
It doesn't?
They avoid them.
Why?
They avoid them?
I don't know, that's what the people from Park Mobile were saying.
Typically with the parking garage, I mean, if you want to do like, I don't know, Hastings has like a two-level parking garage.
Yeah.
I mean, that probably costs them at least a million, a million and a half to construct, and it's never full unless it's a big event weekend, so it's really not useful for that money, you know? So you're trying to just manage what you've got, because everything I've heard is, we've got enough parking. And if we're really trying to put a million dollars for a parking ramp that's full on like 10% of the days of the year, it's, it might not be the best use of funds, so.
I would wonder about that concept that we have enough parking, I feel like I don't get out much these days, but when I do, I gotta, I gotta troll around, like, you know, to find a spot, it's usually pretty busy.
Yeah.
Very rarely.
I live right on top of the hill and they're parked up to my nose.
Well, that's what, that's what we hope that paid parking will.
Help us.
I mean, if we're having these issues with the beach and boaters, then, then this just makes sense.
I think so too, I think it's, I think this is a good thing. I would still like to see a few more parking spots, but somewhere. I think this is awesome.
It's nice the technology's quite user-friendly, you know, too.
That was just a discussion, we don't really have to do anything with that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Well, thank you for sharing that, that was interesting.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Carter.
Okay, other business, canceled the July 3 meeting, our next meeting would be August 7. Anybody have any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Holdovers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on that.
I'll be here for the public hearing, so at least one more.